We good?
Hmm.
All right, we are good. So at this time then, as always, we're a little bit behind with the technology now, which is unfortunate.
Give your light on for this, right?
We'll work on this. What's that?
Give your.
Closer to me because lights on.
Okay.
I'm as good as I go right now. So that being the case, we'll call this meeting to order at seven oh seven. Again, apologies for this seven minutes behind. This time we'll do a roll call and then pledge allegiance for Kent.
Thank you, Mr. President. Valerie Renterer.
Here.
Roke Rochette Williams.
Here.
Deb Cassini Klein.
Here.
Matt Castillo.
Here.
Diane Law.
Here.
Adam McDowell.
Here.
Mayor Paul Gamrat.
Here.
And President Warren.
I am still here. That being done, if we can stand for the pledge of allegiance, if you're able, then we'll begin the rest of our meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for what stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Hoorah. Alrighty. Today is Valentine's Day. Nothing we all like more than sharing our Valentine with the Borough of Churchill. To begin our day, I'll just kind of point out, we've got thirteen attendees so far, fourteen, along with thirteen panelists, it looks like. And so we'll kind of jump into this. We will begin as we do with public comment as a attempt to hear from our residents. Get the word from our streets and see where we can be best. That being the case, if you can raise your hand, we will promote you, call on you, allow you to unmute yourself, then the floor will be yours. As I said, we currently have, it's listed as fourteen attendees. One of them is the Churchill Borough, so I will say thirteen. But we do have a hand raised already. And so if we are able to promote them, that would be great, and we can move forward. First, I think is Kathy Boardner. Kathy, you're promoted. If you want to unmute yourself, you can state your name, address, and you'll have three minutes to speak, of course. Kathy, you are promoted if you want to unmute yourself. You can begin. I see you're muted now.
Um, okay. Are you able to hear me?
I am able to hear you just fine.
Okay, please start my time now. My name is Kathy Boardner, and I live at nineteen twenty-six Hampstead Drive. I am, I have a couple of things to bring up. First is the police merger. I'd like to know, I know that, I'm assuming that you're doing this because there will be cost savings, but I would like to have the discussion about how this will improve police services in Churchill. Also, I want to know if there are increased needs for more public safety in the future. How will this be addressed? For example, now, you know, you may figure out that there's a certain number of police per residence. I don't know how you factor that in, but in the future, if the Amazon facility is built and we have a thousand or more extra residents in the city every day because of the employees, how will that change be addressed? And also, I would like to, that's on the police merger. That's the questions I have on that. I'd like to thank Alex and the council members and others who inspected the intersection of Lewin Lane in Beulah recently. And I'm looking forward to hearing what was, what was determined and what's going to happen in the future. I hope, I don't know if you're going to report on that tonight, but at some point, I think it would be beneficial to report on that situation. And finally, I would like to encourage the borough to consider going back to the regular Zoom format so that people like me who are attending can see other attendees. I think that is a much more transparent way of conducting meetings virtually. And I know I've heard references to, if you get a lot of people, you know, and somebody's disruptive, it's difficult. But I don't think, I know I've facilitated a couple of Zoom meetings when we had a lot of people and it wasn't all that difficult to figure out how to mute people who were disruptive and, you know, getting people to leave the meeting if they're not, you know, if they're, if they're being disruptive. So I would like to encourage the borough to do that because there's a lot of people in the borough who attend these meetings who would like to see our neighbors and others who are also attending. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy, for your comments. In a small space like this, I will say, as you saw, the agenda that the steering committee, which actually is charged with looking at a lot of those things and bringing it to council, is on the agenda today. So some of the questions that you're asking are actually questions that are part of this process, not things that we are already jumping ahead to the idea that we are already having a merger, just to kind of step that, that back a little bit. Other point that you made with regard to Garrick, just FYI, I'm just as interested being that I, or on the Lewin, I'm just as interested being that I live on Garrick, and so that is my corner every day of my life. So I can see the, the, you know, and look forward to hearing as well, whether or not we're able to make some changes with the help of the actual road that, and their ownership, since it's not the borough's ownership, of course. And so I will leave that there. I don't want to take up too much of, of express this time, and I see Murray there. And so I will move forward. The floor is yours. Again, state your name, address, and the three minutes are yours, sir.
I'm Murray Billby at twenty-four twenty-four Churchill Road. I also like the idea of being able to see other people at the same time. So even though we don't have the large numbers over a hundred that we had during these Hillwood meetings, it's a relatively small group of us, so that if we could all see each other's faces, we can, I think, build a little more rapport rather than just having to come on and off. So I would agree with what Kathy says, is so long as it's within a reasonable number, it's equivalent to then having the meeting, you know, at the, at the Borough Building. So this, this is my comments on that one. Otherwise, I'm currently just observing activities.
Thank you, Murray. And, and I knew there was something I didn't address for Kathy, so I'll address it for both of you very quickly. Point of personal privileges as sharing the meetings. I tend to agree that in a smaller space, the idea of having, having the cameras up of everyone, being able to see everyone makes sense. It's something I would discuss with the rest of council in terms of moving forward, but I can understand the point. I would say that in the larger space, realistically, it's not something that can be navigated, and we, we had been zubba before by a racist group. And it's not something that's easy to control. So I commend our borough manager for finding a way to make it more manageable for larger spaces. But I understand, and I personally, I think, you know, would agree to that, you know, depending on what the number is, and that's something to talk with council and with the, with the borough manager logistically with. So thank you for your comment, and to add to Kathy again, thank you for your comment. Do we have any other comments? I'm looking through the process here. Okay. I don't see anyone to make sure on the phone. We normally, I've got two phone calls, call user one and two four four ninety-four seventy-three. So I don't know if there's any comment on call-ins. You have the ability to unmute yourself and speak. If you do have a comment, I'm calling. There you go. I see.
Hey, this is April Klein. I have no comment tonight. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for letting us know, April. I appreciate it. Wait a couple of extra seconds just to make sure. Calling user number one, which is still muted. Okay, so I'm going to close public comment at this time then and move forward into kind of our standard items accepted by motions, beginning with our minutes of fuel.
I guess, Mr. President, I move to accept the meeting minutes from the Monday, January third, twenty twenty-two council reorganization meeting, the January third council workshop meeting, and Monday, January tenth, twenty twenty-two regular council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. So any discussion of the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And minutes accepted without opposition. This moves us on to the mayor's report. Mayor, if you wanted to make any comments in your report.
Thank you, Mr. President. As reported to me, I wish to inform council that there were no unusual events and no serious crimes during the month of January twenty twenty-two. Officers responded to one thousand one hundred and thirty-four calls for service, resulting in nine arrests. Chief Ronald Ackley has reported the total amount of magisterial fines collected for the month of January twenty twenty-two was three hundred fifty-six dollars and three cents. The department's five police vehicles logged four thousand three hundred sixty-three miles in the past month. With the passing of the twenty twenty-two budget and capital improvements improvement plan in recent months, the Churchill Police Department plans to make several upgrades throughout the, throughout the year, as well as to hire an additional officer, bringing our workforce to ten sworn officers. The increase in staffing will permit scheduling to be managed in a manner conducive to reducing overtime and to minimize the number of one-man shifts currently being worked by our officers. As it pertains to equipment, the department plans to procure new Motorola portable mobile radios, new Panasonic mobile data terminals, those are the in-car computers, new Axon body worn cameras and car cameras, as well as a new hybrid police interceptor patrol vehicle. With the inclement weather upon us, residents should be reminded that the Borough Ordinance two sixty-four dash twenty-one pertains to snow removal. In short, residents are responsible for the removal of snow from their respective sidewalks in a timely manner, specifically within twenty-four hours of the conclusion of a snow event. Residents are also not permitted at any time to deposit snow onto any roadway. If a significant snowfall is predicted, residents should be mindful not to park their vehicles on the street or anywhere that may impede snow removal by public workplows. This is also addressed in Borough Ordinance two sixty-four dash twenty-one. It is a good, it is for the good and safety of all residents and visitors, particularly first responders, USPS and delivery personnel. With, with that in mind, the ordinance will be strictly adhered to and enforced during this time of the year. Details and other related statistics according to concerning the police department during the month of January twenty twenty-two are reported on the attached police department reports. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. This time I did attend a motion to accept the mayor's report.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the mayor's report?
I would like to just add one item on the comment about the capital projects. Just a nod to the chief and to the county. The police radios that are actually being purchased are partially funded by the ARBA funds that were received by the county. And because we are joining our purchase with the county's purchasing leverage, we're getting the radios that we were going to spread over five years at a discounted rate now. So better equipment at a lower cost.
Excellent. What, what is the, the, do you know the discounted rate? Like, what's the percentage change?
I would have to look back at the invoices, but I'm happy to get that to you.
It's, you know, nothing that I want you to have to do additional work on, just like knowing that we save money, how we're saving it. So I appreciate it either way. Thank you, Krista, for that. Any other discussion in that space?
Yeah, Jay.
Yes, go ahead.
So I guess I had two questions on that. One, you know, we're talking about buying a new police vehicle. I know I came in right at the time where we bought one last year. I guess I'm curious to understand better on that. You know, why we're making that move and kind of how many vehicles we already have, what, what that looks like, and then as well as staffing. You know, I haven't seen any kind of projections or justification for that. You know, I think it was mentioned in the report that it sounds like there was some type of study done, but I think council should be able to review that information.
And I think that was a conversation that takes place during the budgeting, actually, as to the staffing levels. One of the things that took place with the vehicles is, is two years ago or so, I want to say, reports from the mayor come through that have the mileage on each of the vehicles. And as a result, we came up with a long-term plan as to the replacement of the vehicles on an annual basis. And so that information is provided for each of the vehicle's mileage, and that's how we determined in the budgeting process that we were going to be bringing in the new vehicles. The one thing to recognize always when we are dealing with staffing, we're dealing with capital purchases like that, that that is something that's being discussed during the budgeting process, so that we know coming in kind of what we're going to do with that outlay. So it shouldn't be something that we are just kind of putting out there without doing it during the budgeting and having the conversation.
I have a comment to say about that. So the budget is a plan. It doesn't necessarily mean that that is what can happen. It is a plan. It is a framework for us to work on. Is that correct?
That's right. The budgeting, the budgeting is a framework, and the discussion of it takes place generally during that time. So as we look at particularly the police, which has been kind of an ongoing long before and long after, right? Vehicles, expenses, personnel, as we look at that process, the time that we tend to discuss the personnel cost, for instance, which we all discuss, is during that time. So we not only discuss the budgeting with respect to the police department, but we discuss the budgeting with respect to the administration. Right? So that is, that is the time in which we tend to kind of work out what's the number of officers, talk to the chief about that, sort out what we think we need to try and set that up. That then gets put forward as the plan so that we have a general understanding of how that will work. Now, it is, as is always the case with budgeting, a kind of working document, so that if something changes on the ground, if there was something that we're to move from that position, that we're able to adjust. But generally, the way in which we try to identify what is going to be our budget number for our staff numbers, for our policing staff, for our vehicles, and if we were doing any other kind of known capital outlays, we try to have that during the budgeting process. If that, if that helps.
So as, as a follow-up to that comment, Valerie, and thank you for the clarification, Jay. You know, I seem to recall during our budgeting that, you know, I think, I think we kind of, as it was said, was, this was kind of optional. If we needed to add a police or we were putting it in the budget in case we decided we wanted to move that way, but I don't think it was made clear during the budgeting process that that was definitely part of the plan. So, you know, I personally, I'd like to understand, I guess, the staffing needs and levels and, you know, see that analysis in detail if it's still available or if it's available for review. And then just to make sure I'm understanding and clarify, so when we say we're procuring a new police vehicle, that means we'll also then be getting rid of one of our older vehicles.
We sell, we sell the vehicle.
Okay, I, again, the way it was, the way it was said, it made it sound like we were just adding an additional, so that, that helps clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, is, again, it's kind of a matter of process for us with the, you know, and the vehicles have been, quite frankly, a very kind of candid conversation in council, going back to some of the prior members whose spouses are on the line today, as a matter of fact, that it's been a fairly regular conversation within council. And so because of that, you know, there is better, there was really a question of what are the, the mileage and needs for the vehicles. And I'm not sure if it was the chief before Rock or if it was before that, I can't remember which one. Who, Park, who provided the, who provided the, the initial kind of five-year plan of this. You know, one of the challenges, I think, of, of the changes in these spaces is trying to get everything to everybody all the time. And so that's where I think sometimes the committee space works its best because you get people who kind of have the understandings in those spaces, but we've got to make sure that it gets out to everybody. So when there's questions like this, that you have access to that information. But definitely, the process for both the vehicle space and the personnel space are ones that have been kind of combed over. You know, I'm not, to be, to be clear, in terms of the personnel space, I do recall the conversation in regard to where we are versus kind of where, where we, where we need to be. And to your point, by the way, that is one of the primary concerns that we try to deal with is what overtime looks like versus what staffing looks like. And that has been one of the, the concerns on how we do this. One of the things that we identified and has come true again this year is that when we do get lean, it's not simply a case of what our overtime is as it stands. It's what happens as soon as we get an injury and then a second injury. And then we ended up with a coverage problem, which is why we find ourselves into the space of making sure that we get back to a level that we're not necessarily worried about that in the future. So there's like both a overtime space and a preventative space that you're working simultaneously to try and address the issue. I think very good points made, and certainly something that we can kind of go back and make sure is, is available to everybody. If that's helpful.
Just, just your comments to what Jay said, and thanks for clarifying all that, all thing about that. And the plan, the plan was put up together, excuse me, with the police vehicles that rather than keeping them till they had, you know, over a hundred thousand miles on them and were worth nothing, that we, you know, after a certain number of years of mileage, we're going to trade them in. We did get close to thirteen thousand, I think, on the last, on the last vehicle, which is a fairly decent price for the trade-in. So to make sure that we have, you know, the, the best equipment available for our officers. You know, the plan was decided, rather than keep those vehicles till you just have to tow them to the junkyard that we purchased them. And then again, like President Doran said about the, the overtime, that was a concern with the officers getting hurt. So I'm getting out with COVID. Who covers that? Because the overtime costs were running pretty high.
Yeah, I think we did find ourselves this time. And again, I think COVID is a unique landscape. So I don't know that I would do my long-term planning based on COVID. I hope, I hope I'm not doing my long-term planning based on COVID. I think that would be problematic. So I'm sorry, please.
I, I'm just curious, do you have any idea what shape the rest of the, the police vehicles are in that we may be looking at this in the next couple of years or so?
And so, chief, we should have a, if.
Just, just a clarification. Our oldest vehicle is a two thousand fourteen Ford Interceptor, and it has, I'm looking at it wrong, two seven, the two thousand seventeen has ninety-four thousand miles on it. We have a two thousand thirteen Ford Tour sedan with ninety-one thousand miles on it. So those are getting pretty high. The other one, I know there's two vehicles that's here, forty-five thousand, and our twenty twenty Interceptor has, which we just purchased not long ago, has sixteen thousand miles on it already.
And that's provided to, in the report.
Yes.
Because one of the things that, that we had asked for as a matter of how this worked moving forward, and this goes back a little bit, was to make sure that the report itself provided the mileage as a regular update so that we knew what the anticipated replacement would be. This went from a space in which we were kind of willy-nilly replacing our vehicles to trying to maximize the replacement and do so in a way that we were maximizing the value. Right? You don't want to be in a place where you drive it till the wheels fall off, and then you get nothing, and you still got to go through and replace it, get all the, get all the things for it. So I think to the, you know, to both our current and prior chiefs' credit, to the mayor's credit, that they've put together a relatively decent program to ensure that the vehicle replacement process works well. You know, I, I have in my own space, and I can't speak for everybody else, but I've relied on them for that decision-making that they've provided us with the mileage and the information on when, you know, on what the numbers are, what it looks like. And that the chief, I think, has a fairly good understanding of, of the condition of the vehicles. The other thing I would point out, and I don't want to believe this too far, but is that mileage on a police car is a little bit different than mileage on your car because of the kind of driving that they do, right, and what it necessitates. You know, where I may get a hundred and fifty thousand miles off my car, or even two hundred thousand. You know, I'm not trying to go from zero to sixty at full and then come to a full stop every time I drive my car. So it creates some other additional complications, I think. But I appreciate the, the report that you provide, Mr. Mayor, along with the chief, that it provides the information on the vehicles, and it gives us an understanding of where we need to be.
Hey, hey, Jay. You had mentioned that, that, I guess, that report that normally has the, the ongoing vehicle mileage, where, where is that report normally contained? Because I don't recall ever seeing something specific with each vehicle and mileage in any of the binders or anything.
So, Mr. Mayor, that's in the mayor's report, or that comes from the chief to you, correct?
It's, it's hard, it's, it's hard to hear Paul right now.
He was saying it's, it's within the mayor's report.
There's a packet in there. It's usually, it's generally, each month is in the neighborhood of twenty pages long. It lists all the calls that the officers responded to by street, the number of hours that the police were on overtime, who's in charge, who owed the tickets, that, statistics like that. This is actually on the, the second page of that report.
I, I mean, I've, I've been on council for a year, and I can say I've never seen that twenty-page report.
But you know what? From now on, we can make sure.
So you're not, you're not getting a copy of the, the full mayor's report?
No, just what he gives in, I, I, as, as his verbal.
That's problematic, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, we, can I just say, it is a, I think there's a, just a miscommunication here, and we can include the entire report in future binders, and I can make sure that's, that's, I, there's clearly just a miscommunication on that end of what needs to go into the binder and what does not. So we'll take care of that.
Right. Thank you for that. Yeah, when I get it, when I get the report from Krista, from the chief, you know, it's, it's a big thick packet long, and like I said, it's thirty pages long.
Yeah, so if, if there is a need, the council feels that they have a need to look at the entire chief's report and not take the abbreviation, we can make that happen.
Yeah.
Is that kind of the, the general sense?
Yeah.
Easy, easy peasy.
Thank you.
Anything else we're, we're missing in this space of, of the mayor's report? It's a lot for the mayor's report today.
Thanks, Matt.
Excellent. So this is actually still in discussion. So at this point, I'm just trying to accept the mayor's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the mayor's report is accepted without opposition. It's a deep dive on the mayor's report today. Moving forward, I have both the treasury and pay the bills. I would look to the, the finance committee if you'd like to make a dual motion.
Mr. President, I move to accept the treasurer's report for the month ending January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and move to direct the finance officer to pay the bills for the Borough of Churchill accrued since January tenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on paying the bills? It's a far less deep dive. That being the case, so anytime that we have bills that were being paid that are above the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, I like to read them out, even though you can see them in front of you on the screen, I still think it's important that people understand where our funding is going. That being the case, this time, it looks like today, we sit at six for the day. You know, again, you can see them in front of you, but we've got Alco San, the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifty cents. That's accordingly treatment services through December. We've got Gateway Engineers, the amount of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. And this is December services. Again, some of that is reimbursable, the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, sixty cents through Hillwood. We have Vigliotti Landscape Construction, the amount of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. These are charges for January for public works. These are charges for January for public works. We've got Cargill Incorporated, the amount of twenty four thousand, three hundred and eighty three dollars and thirty cents. That is our salt purchases through the Shea Cog, American Salt, Rock Salts, the amount of eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty four thousand, thirty four dollars and five cents. Again, that's another salt purchase through the Shea Cog. And Petricus Contracting, which I'm sure I said wrong, in the amount of fifteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty six thousand, twenty five cents. And that is on the Collins Road Pump Station, which has the the grants, the grow grant would be reimbursable. There are others in there that if you're interested in looking at and made available, both in the amount of ten thousand and five thousand. But those are the kind of key key levels there. Any other discussion on the bills? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the bills are both paid and the treasurer report is accepted without opposition. This moves us into the action items beginning with.
Mr. President, I move to approve Resolution four, five, three, five of the Borough of Churchill, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, appointing Michelle L. McAndrew as Assistant Manager, Treasurer, Assistant Secretary, Finance Officer for the Borough of Churchill.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Crickets today. Well, I will say first of all, congratulations and and welcome. You know, again, there's there's a lot that we have to do here, so we're happy to have you on board. Yes, she she is on. And so we appreciate you and your willingness to to step up and work work with us and for us and for the people of Churchill. So thank you very much, Michelle, and congratulations in a new position. So is there any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none. We'll go all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Congratulations, Michelle, and welcome to. Moving on to number eight.
I move to accept the proposal for Krista Watt to transition from Finance Officer, Treasurer to Borough Transition Manager as of February nineteenth, twenty twenty two to help onboard the new Assistant Manager Treasurer.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Alex, maybe you'd like to say a few words about what that what that's for?
Of course, we're in a great position. We have two outstanding individuals who are willing to serve the borough first, starting with Krista. The fact that we were giving as much notice as we did back on December twenty seventh, my world changed when Krista submitted her offer or letter of resignation. But thankfully, her new employer was letting her work till February eighteenth, which enabled us to get really active at the 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 pursuit of a new replacement for her. And of course, Michelle, which I'm very, very thankful that she has had a willingness to come serve here and you're I'm very grateful that you have given her the opportunity to serve here. You know, she had obviously has to give notice to her employer. So the fact is that the ships, if you will, will pass, but not in the same timeframe. Krista will end her service with us full time this Friday. And then Michelle will be starting more or less on March first, Tuesday, March first. So I can't say enough about the both of them. They have since last week been coordinating schedules and and willingness to work Michelle's end while she's still with her current employer to start figuring out payroll and all the timeframe issues that are related to the treasurer position. And then after the eighteenth, with Krista's new employer, I'm very thankful for allowing her. We worked it out with them because her full time duties are to them, not to us. We worked out with them that they would give her about ten hours a week to help us transition through the middle of May. So I can't ask for more in this situation to have that kind of continuity. Council will not really miss a beat. You'll you'll have the kind of service that you've come to expect with Krista, with Michelle and the transition. So I'm thankful that you're open to this idea.
Well, I'm I'm very, very grateful to both of them and to you because we could never have anticipated a smoother transition than you've all worked together to provide. So I'm grateful.
Any other discussion? Seems relatively quiet in that space. Standing. All right. Well, at this time then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And again, it is accepted without opposition. Thank you, Krista. And excited the fact that you're willing to continue to help us as we kind of move through this. So it is it is great news and I think we're once again well situated as we go through another transition. Moving forward, that brings us up to number nine.
Mr. President, I I move to direct the Borough Manager to execute an agreement with Campbell Durant, P.C. to assist with human resources and labor relations legal assistance.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. And again, this is about bringing in an outside firm that we discussed together last week to primarily address the issues of police labor negotiation. It seemed like a good idea to kind of give us a fresh perspective. And I think that that's where this brings us. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes without opposition. This moves us on to number ten.
Mr. President, I motion to direct the Borough Manager to open a new bank account through PNC Bank dedicated to the deposit of real estate tax funds only.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the matter? Some of these are seem to read pretty self explanatory. If there is no other discussion, then all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? And it is accepted without opposition. This moves us on to a number eleven.
Mr. President, I motion to approve Resolution four, five, three, six of the Borough Churchill, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, accepting the Churchill Wilkins Regional Police Study and appointing two members of the Borough Council to serve as representatives on Regional Police Steering Committee. And the Wilkins, Wilkins Township Commissioners are also contemplating adopting a similar resolution tonight at their regular commissioner meeting.
Is there a second?
Point of order, Mr. President. The the resolution that was at least on the screen that I saw said three people, not two.
The the motion on the floor is two. Whether it's indicated in the agenda, so that requires discussion. So to your point of order is well taken, which would be part of the discussion process.
Thank you.
The motion, of course, can be whatever the whatever the floor member makes, whatever the council member makes as a motion. The point of order, though, and for clarification, was the question of that the original or the original schedule said three. After talking with Wilkins, it was moved to two with the understanding that we have the ability to move people in and out as we as we desire as members of that committee, so that we have two standing. It would make the most common sense to me upfront that as we begin this, that the Public Safety Committee in its entirety would be at the table. But I know that Wilkins also is looking at their kind of leadership as being their standing committee members in that we would pose the same. What we would expect, though, as this moves forward, because it is not in a situation where we are agreeing to merge at this point. It is at a point that we are agreeing to come to the table with their leadership to say, what are the factors that we need in order to make sure that this happens? There will be certain points, I am certain, in which, and this was part of the conversation that we had last week, that we would say, you know, we're now talking about, you know, what are the implications with legacy costs for for pensions? Now, at that point, you know, and Sylvia was fairly clear in not wanting to have a giant room full of people. We would obviously be interested in having the the financial, you know, our financial committees chair at the table. And so the idea being that the leadership of both councils would remain and as we move into some of those steps, we'd be able to bring people from each of those. If we move to a space where we were talking about, for instance, which we at some point now, we think would probably be actually post operation because we're not going to, you know, even if we agree to this entire process, and I've got some some questions of of my own in that. But even if we agreed this entire process, you know, we may have officers on the street of a joint police department before we had a new building, for instance. But as we got to the point of having a conversation about buildings and not kind of to our our existing buildings, I think that would be something that would require other folks, such as our infrastructure folks at the table. And we will get to a point of how do we how do we message this? Right to to our community. You would think at that point that we would want our Communications Committee at the table. And so in a manageable space, what made sense, I think, in the conversation with Wilkins was to have leadership as two standing and then to alternate what's necessary as this progresses, if this progresses. I'm sorry? Well, they they could bring as many as they wanted in terms of from their from their township. There's sunshine, there's sunshine considerations, but they'd be able to go to three if they wanted to under under sunshine they determined.
Valerie, could you just repeat whatever your comment was? It couldn't be heard.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to turn my mic on. I said they only have two right now.
Thank you.
Two as in?
They only have two leadership right now.
To be correct.
Yeah, they only have two leadership.
Correct. They they've basically brought their leadership to the table and not the rest of of their council.
Of their council, correct.
Correct. So it's kind of we're reciprocating in the same space.
Mr. President, if I could, just to just to clarify, and I think there there are five member board, right? So they'd only be able to allow allowed to have two if they wanted to stay within sunshine. Are they? Excuse me, are they seven?
So Alex, can you speak to what you talked to Rebecca in terms of the numbers on their end?
He's correct. I mean, there are five member commission. So if they go with a third member, we would run the meetings just like regular public meetings with minutes, advertisements and so forth to be scheduled. The two on their end and the two on our end would require us to have to comply with sunshine law related to public meetings.
Across both communities. Understood and appreciative. Any other discussion on the matter?
I have a question about the Steering Committee. Does that mean that there will be four committee members? Two from Churchill and two from Wilkins? Or are there additional members who will be be participating like the chief?
Right. So absolutely, the chief police, the the Borough Manager, the the mayor. On our end, as I said before, you know, we have the luxury of being able to rotate additional folks in without being under sunshine so that we can match them kind of two to two in leadership and still bring additional folk. So what I would say upfront from my vantage point, and again, you know, I don't want to speak out of term for the rest of council. But from my vantage point, which would make the most sense in the in the beginning, would be that the Public Safety Committee is all at the table because that's really what we're dealing with upfront. And then as we advance from there, that we move into whatever the topic is that if we need to bring different people and that we bring those people in appropriately in that there is because of the magnitude of this, I think, and the potential impact of it, that there's kind of monthly reporting out to all of council irrespective of what's gone on or who was who was there. I think this requires its own kind of monthly report to council irrespective. If that's helpful, Brooke, I don't know. Sometimes I'm not sure if I, to be clear.
Thank you.
Jay, just a little confused because I think before you said we were going to match them two for two. You know, in that kind of style, but then you said the Public Safety Committee, which I believe has three members on it. So are we appointing three or two?
To clarify again, the resolution is for two. As I said, we have the luxury of being able to bring an extra person to the meeting, which is different than the resolution. So the resolution matches the resolution two for two, which is leadership for leadership. They're aware and we've had conversations with Sylvia, with their leadership about the fact that we can bring an extra person, that they can bring non council people on their end, for instance, to come into the room. So it gives us a little bit more flexibility on our end to bring in other council members. Whereas they can't bring in other council members. But the resolution and what we're saying in terms of the Steering Committee as the two elected officials matches on both sides so that we're even in the space in terms of the resolution. Is that clarified for you, Matt?
Yeah, thank you. And and just as another point, when you say leadership, I mean, you would mean our our president and vice president of council.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, Sylvia selects hers. On her end, as president, she's certainly going to be in that room without without a doubt in the same same manner.
Mr. President, the only maybe clarification question I have or maybe comment I have is the the draft resolution, I think that's been presented. I understand the motion is is slightly different than what was originally in the packets, I think, in that, you know, it goes from it would go from three to two to start. The way it's set up is it actually has blanks in the resolution. So I didn't know if you wanted to, you know, have council actually vote on just a more generic, you know, council hereby agrees to appoint two council members to the Steering Committee and then allow some more flexibility or maybe even not more than three council members to the Steering Committee and sort of revise the resolution that way rather than naming specific individuals and having to, you know, passing new resolutions if you want to make those changes.
Yeah, I think I think in the space of the resolution, match it two for two. I don't want to do the not more than three and put me in a different difficult conversation with the other side on that. But I do think, and I and I don't love the idea of naming the people in the sense that it could never change that way versus putting it in a position that says, you know, that we'll we'll appoint two. You know, so I think we can rework the language. I think the motion on the floors is fine unless you have a problem with the motion on the floor. I think the resolution itself, you know, if it needs to be recrafted and signed, we can we can alter that with the understanding.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, just for just to make it nice and clean, I just want to make sure if if the council is voting on a resolution, you know, which we should know what the final form of that resolution is at the at the time of the motion. So I I would just suggest that instead of the 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 third paragraph, which currently reads council hereby appoints the following three council members to serve on the Regional Police Steering Committee. We instead say, you know, council agrees to appoint two council members to serve on the on the Regional Regional Police Steering Committee.
Again, that's why you make the big money, sir. You know.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I I have I have no disagreement whatsoever with that. Does anybody have any any issue with that?
No issue. I would ask that the council members be identified because it's clear from this conversation that we're already in motion as far as who those council members would be. And so, you know, adding that to the resolution, if you need to change that in the future, we could possibly edit the resolution. Is that correct?
Yeah, we can. I mean, I'm I'm open either way. You know, I was trying to provide, I think, what what gave most flexibility without having to do a new kind of new resolution, should there be a change for any reason. But I'm I'm fine either way. You know, the the to spell things out and make sure kind of we're clear on the space. What the proposal is and what's been kind of discussed on on both ends between Wilkins is that, you know, we would bring to the table the president, vice president is standing two, but that we would be allowed to bring a third member, right, at at any time because it doesn't doesn't have a problem for us with regard to to the sunshine. That being the case, you know, and also to be kind of clear from my vantage point and unless there's objection, it made the most sense that we start with the public safety to break that that we did not stop having kind of our Public Safety Committee, which is the three of us. Brooke and I, I'm including you in that conversation as we move forward until we got to a point that we were talking about things that were not germane to that particular committee. And I would see that kind of moving probably towards Adam next in terms of some of the financial ends in the kind of next phases if we if we decided and made a recommendation that was agreed upon by council to move forward. So I'm, you know, I'm open either way. If folks would rather have it kind of spelled out with language, I'm fine with that. Folks would rather have it just two, I'm fine with that. So I I will cede the floor and let let you all, let you all decide that instead of instead of me.
My only concern is, Mr. President, what you mentioned, and that is that we're, you know, we're entering into an agreement with another municipality that has its own position. And when you're starting with a group like that, if I were in their position, I would be having some question about why, you know, why we're starting out identifying three people in this agreement and they can only have two. And they can only have two.
So I, I'm sorry to interruption, but I don't think the question was whether or not we're going to expand to three. I think Brooke's point was identifying the names of the two within the resolution. So that it was clarified for everyone, including the public, quite frankly, in the, in the, in the resolution. I'm fine with that. If, if, if folks are fine with that. Um, my initial thought was to try and give it a little more flexibility so that we needed to make a change. But you're right, Brooke, that we can always make a change for your resolution. Right? And so I'm fine with just kind of spelling it out at the motion that it would list, uh, Diane and I, and that we would move forward from there.
Well, and, and maybe an opportunity. I like, I like Brooke's idea of making it, you know, kind of concrete, but maybe we just say council president and council vice president. You know, and if this were somehow take a long time and change. Those are the people, I mean, we're electing them to be in charge of the president or the council rather, then they should also be in charge of the steering committee.
I'm, I'm, I'm good with, I'm good with that. Like you said, I, I'm. Whatever brings us the, the, the right flexibility works for me. I think titles work fine in terms of leadership. Right? So I think that's probably the, the happy medium. So I, I like that personally. So if we're good with that, uh, Mr. Solicitor, can, can you make that work?
Sure. I mean, I, I think that's, uh, Alex, you mind popping that sucker back up on the screen? Just we're all looking at the same thing. So just maybe some, something as simple as, uh, number three there. Uh, you know, council hereby appoints the president and vice president of council to serve on the regional police steering committee.
Sure.
If I'm getting the, the, uh, the right message.
Excellent.
You got it, sir.
All right.
All right. Easy, easy peasy. You know, I've said that wrong my whole life. A whole other thing, the, the end of easy peasy. I've always said wrong my whole life. So, uh, just, just.
How did you say? Well. Why did you say that wrong?
You totally called me out. After council, after council. Well, what, what is it? What, what is the proper ending of that?
Easy lemon squeezy.
See now, now we're all going off on the tangent. All right. Uh, any other discussion on, on this matter?
I just had one other comment, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
I, uh, you know, I think, I think it's a, a great, um, great balance and appreciate your comments there, Jay, and clarification. I certainly think it makes a lot of sense to, you know, have two on two so that it doesn't seem necessarily overwhelming or, or, you know, other issues, even just with sunshine and whatnot. Um, from their side. So I think that strikes a good balance. Um, you know, I, I would personally think that kind of that third person, well, I think public safety can make a lot of sense. You know, this is going to have a, a very wide reaching impact to our borough and our residents. So, um, you know, I would like to encourage that we think about, you know, possibly a, a third person or maybe even. Some rotation in that seat, you know, as was kind of discussed, just to make sure we're getting, you know, a very diverse group and, um, you know. Outside eyes kind of on this process as we work with them.
Yeah. And I think as, as, as you heard, Matt, and I don't disagree, I think as you heard. That what makes the most sense is to rotate in based on what the, what the agenda is at the time. So as we enter into the space and we're really talking about the nuts and bolts of public safety, it makes the most sense to have the public safety committee at the table. As we move forward is kind of, I kind of said before, the next thing, logical thing will probably be. Within the financial space, right? As we start to look at the nuts and bolts, the finances and how this would operate together. And then, as I said before, you know, as we move past that, we would continue to look at, at the other structure. So the communication committee, as I said, then the infrastructure committee, I completely agree with you. That was certainly something that, that in that space makes the most sense. And the way that I would hope that this would function is that as we move forward. And as we kind of project where we're going. That we are proactive in what that space is, what that seat is not reactive to it. So that we anticipate that we're heading into a space of having a discussion about the finances. So that we're not bringing in Adam and saying, okay, now catch up Adam. Right? That we're saying to Adam, hey, this is what's going to be coming up in the next couple of months. Here's what we've got so far, you know, dig in with your committee, come ready, come ready to, to work with us. I think that, that's the best way to make this work and get the most out of our council. One of the things that I really like is that we really are kind of moving back to a space of pushing things into the proper committees. And so this is one of those spaces that if you're talking about police, you're pretty much talking about, you know, the public safety committee to begin with. But because of its magnitude, it's going to touch all of the committees. Which means we're going to need the chairs of all of the committees and sometimes not even the chairs. But the people of all the committees at the table using their skills at some point or another. So I completely agree with you. And I would expect that that's how this will, will operate.
Certainly. I, I appreciate that follow-up, Jay. I think, um, I guess just to clarify my, my own statement. Um, you know, one of the things that I've learned through, you know, just last year, even with the infrastructure committee. Is, you know, it's, it's been good to have kind of folks that don't have, you know, my eye for infrastructure, those kind of outside. So I guess where I was saying is certainly, you know, I, I, I think it can make sense when you're talking finance to have someone from finance. But having someone else that maybe isn't currently involved in public safety, you know, um, some of the other times I think can see some of those other issues that maybe. We get blinders on to because, you know, we're too deep into the weeds on some of those things. So for a complex issue like this, I was saying, I think it makes more sense to, you know, have some of that outside at the table throughout the process. Not just necessarily when it's like, hey, we're talking communications today or infrastructure. Because they may see things that, you know, the rest of us are blind to if we're too deep in the weeds on this.
And so while I appreciate that position, I would just point out, uh, that we're dealing with the situation of. The creation of a new department that will include the borough managers of both boroughs to bring their, their perspective, the police departments of chiefs to bring their, bring their perspective. And so we really are trying to make sure that this runs as smooth and as efficient as possible. And that being the case, I think figuring out who the proper person is at the proper time. Um, is one of the reasons that in the conversations that kind of Sylvia and I had, both internally for council for us, because we have that extra space, but also externally. Right? Not even related to being on council. Right? So bringing in a resident, bringing somebody else, bringing, you know, the, these are conversations that we've had back and forth right now. And that really, it's going to be the role of that steering committee to make those determinations on who should be coming to the table and when. You know, the, the thing for us is that in working with them. And trying to make sure that we're in a space that's most effective, because listen, if this doesn't work, this doesn't work. Let me be clear about that too. Right? I, I have said before, I have, I have reasons that I think this is a good idea and also have real reservations about this. And so there's going to be real discussion. But it requires that leadership make some decisions. And I'm not talking about leadership of Diane and I, I'm talking about Sylvia, Wilkins and us and the mayor and the, the borough manager over there who oversees their department. That we're able to come to a space that we're kind of on the same path. Right? So that, and if we diverge too far off the same path, then this doesn't happen. Right? Because then we have, you know, really what will be conflicting interests. And at that point, if we have conflicting interests that can't be resolved, it doesn't make sense. So our way to move forward right now, I think, is to start with what has already been at the table to begin this process. The same people who kind of had the conversation about what a steering committee should be. Are the next people that I would assume would be at the room when we, when the steering committee comes together. And that's basically been public safety because this falls under public safety prior to the creation of the steering committee. I think once we move past that, we'll get to a point that certainly there will be different faces at the table. Um, I don't want to kind of rehash that because I've kind of walked through that whole process. Uh, but I think we're, we're at a fairly decent, decent point. Uh, and I think this is a way forward that will be successful. For Churchill, whether it's successful as a merger, by the way, of a police department is yet to be determined. Right? But as a process, successful for Churchill is what I'm most interested in. And I think what all of council yourself included, myself and, and everyone else, uh, is most interested in, I think that is, that is the path forward. Any other discussion on the matter?
Just one additional comment. Um, I think that what I'm hearing from both of you and what I would like to kind of summarize. Um, I don't want to speak for Matt, but I think what he's speaking to is just wanting to be included and understanding the process. So if during the working meeting, um, if there could be updates for the entire council as to where we are in the process. I think it'll help keep everyone abreast of what's happening and, you know, where we stand.
I, I fully agree. And you may recall that, uh, it's, one of the things that I think is important with this particular committee because of its magnitude. Is that there is kind of a monthly report that comes out from the committee to all of council. I don't think this can be the kind of committee because it is a, it's not just that it's an inner, you know, intermunicipal or, or, or multimunicipal two, so five municipal. That, that it's not just that we're working with another government. The impact of this in either direction is of a size and magnitude. That I think all council members, whether you're at a meeting or not at a meeting, need to be abreast of what's going on. This, this is not, you know, you know, to be, to be quite frank. Uh, you know, I think sometimes the, you know, whether it's the police committee or the, or you used to be the police committee, the public safety or the infrastructure committee. You know, or the finance committee, they're off doing their thing. And we get a report back, you know, and we're like, we, we, we believe in, in what the infrastructure committee is doing. We believe in what the finance committee is doing. Thank you very much. We move forward. This, I think, is a different space and that's why I have the expectation that not only will everyone get a report. But that everyone will be touching this committee at some point or another. Right? It doesn't seem like this is the kind of thing that we can sit on the outside and say like, oh, hey, Matt, don't worry about it. You're in infrastructure. It's never going to bother you. No. It, it's going to touch you. Right? It has to. So it's, it's my, it's my feeling that, uh, Brooke, to your point, that there needs to be kind of the monthly reports moving forward. Um, and that quite frankly, as it moves out of kind of the standard committee space into this kind of, uh, larger structure. Uh, as I said before, that we're proactive in letting people know when they can anticipate additional involvement, not reactive to it, saying, oh crap, now we're talking about finance. Did anyone talk to Adam? You know, so that, that would be my, my, uh, my anticipation then. Please.
I, I think it's important to, you know, to conceptualize this situation in that we're not going to be coming back to the council in a month. You know, with this whole thing put together. This is a process. It is going to be a fairly long process. We've got a lot of details to move through. And this first part is just inching our way with Wilkins to make our way through the most basic stuff. Uh, and then after that, if we get past that part. Then we'll be moving into what Jay's describing, but I just wanted to make it clear, this is not a short process here. This is, this is going to take some time.
As you can see, it's a process enough that we're having quite a discussion about it, right? Uh, which is important and I appreciate. Things like this, sometimes it's better that we have deep discussions that everyone just goes, oh, okay, cool. Right? So I appreciate the comments, the questions and the concerns, uh, that are being brought forth. I don't want to end debate if there's other, other discussions. So I, I want to make sure. Is there any other kind of discussion on the matter?
Just one other comment too. Like, uh, I know in those discussions, those panels, we had talked earlier about having representatives from the police. Sitting on those meetings. So, so we get some insights on how they feel about as well.
Yes. And what, and what the mayor is, is speaking to, uh, was actually brought up and in a really, really thoughtful way by, by Brooke about making sure that we have. You know, basically the stakeholders at the table, you know, and a lot of times I think when you start this process. You don't make sure that you have the proper stakeholders at the table. Uh, and so as things move forward, absolutely. And that's part of, again, the kind of the, the function of this committee, right? To bring in stakeholders, hear from them, both residents, police officers, uh, leadership, council. You know, and make sure that we have a full picture as we move forward. So I appreciate that comment. Any other discussion on the matter? Given the amount of debate on this, I'm actually going to put this to, to a roll call if that's acceptable.
Sure. Diane Law.
Yes.
Matt Castilla.
Yes.
Deb Cassini Klein.
Yes.
Brooke Porchat Williams.
Yes.
Valerie Rent Taylor.
Yes.
Adam McDowell.
Yes.
Council President Jay Dorn.
Yes. Is that everybody? I feel like we're missing something. Do I want more? I, 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 I think sometimes when we have, uh, robust debate, it's good that we hear everybody to make sure that everybody has both their, their voice and, and their vote counts. So I appreciate that from everyone. This moves us on to, uh, number 12, I think.
Mr. President, I motion to direct the borough manager to sign an agreement with Savvy Citizen for electronic citizen communication service.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion on the matter?
Mr. President, if I could, I'd just ask that the motion, uh, include the language, you know, subject to approval of the solicitor and manager as to the terms and conditions of the agreement.
So we got it. We got to let you read it? Dang it. And Alex.
I promise I would just.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
No, no, I mean, it's, we, we, you know, at this point then, being that there's a motion on the floor. Uh, I would entertain a motion to amend said motion to include the solicitor, the review by solicitor and, uh, the borough manager.
So I motion to amend the.
The, the motion on the floor.
The motion on the floor for.
To, to include, oh, I'll, I'll give the language. Yep. To include.
To include.
The, the review by the solicitor and the borough manager.
To their, to, to review.
To include.
To include.
Same day. I told you this. To include a review by the, by the solicitor and the borough manager.
To include the reviews for the solicitor and the borough manager.
Thank you. All of, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that covers the amendment. Now we have the motion that's still on the floor with the amended language. Okay? So that, that being the case, is there any additional discussion on this, uh, issue of moving, uh, to a contract with Savvy Citizen?
I, I just had a question on the cost compared to, um, I think we're using swift reach, swift reach right now.
So is your, is your question to, to what is the, the difference in costs?
Uh, yeah, or is there, I mean, yeah, I'm sorry. I guess, yes. Is, is there a difference in? There's a.
It's rather, oh, go ahead, Alex. Yeah.
I mean, again, it, my understanding is it's a, there's a savings to it. What we like about Savvy Citizen, in addition to the price, is, is the marketing that comes with it. Um, and it's pliability related to. More options we have to communicate, you know, in, in various forms. So that stands up pretty well. We wanted to do this about a year ago, but we had to let. The sat, the swift reach contract come to an end. So we did run into an early termination fee and incur more costs. No, I, I think, I think that's great. Better, better service. I mean, I looked through the, the packet and the brochure and it looked like we, there's a lot of options for, for doing, um, you know, announcements by certain areas and other stuff. I think they may even have an app if I saw correctly. Um, so I think this is great. And if it's also a cost savings, you know, what, what an additional great benefit.
And to add to that, there are people that don't have smartphones. That does not exclude them. People can still get text message alerts. Even if they don't have a smartphone. Um, so this really reaches a lot of people, which we really liked.
Fantastic.
No. I don't think they're seeing it from that angle, but it, but it's all good. Uh, any other, any other discussion on the matter?
I believe it's been, uh, very successful in other boroughs that have used it. So it's got a good, really good track record.
Yeah. I, I would again point out, as I had in the previous meeting, that this was, has been brought to us, um, by members of our community as well for some time. Um, you know, including some of the folks on the, on our, on our call today. Um, I know, I, yeah, well, my memory isn't as great as it was when I was 25. I still can remember at least that April's brought it up more than once. Uh, and so, um. Thank you and thank the community that again, we, you know, government is slow, but at lea, but at least we, we do hear you. Uh, and this is certainly something that I think with the establishment of the communication committee and the work that, that Val has done. Was able to kind of get, get things moving again. And so I, I, I thank the communication committee for their, for their work in this space. Anything else on, on this particular matter? Uh, hearing none, then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we are on the Savvy Citizen. This moves us to, uh, Nestor.
Uh, Mr. President, I would make a motion to authorize the borough manager can execute an agreement with Nestor Resources. To assist with the drafting, the new Churchill Borough Code Language and this bid specifications for solid waste management.
I can. Any discussion on the matter? I will simply say I am excited. I am not, uh, deeply involved in this one.
I would just appreciate it if Alex, if you would just give for the, particularly for the public, a, a brief description of what we're doing here and why.
Uh, we can't hear you, Alex.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Uh, Nestor, Michelle Nestor comes with decades of experience helping local governments like Churchill Borough in this area. And, and it's real, there's a great opportunity, quite frankly, to have her expertise. Whether we're, we're discussing better ways to do the leaf collection in the, in the fall. Or how we handle yard waste in the spring and the recycling and the nuances of that ever changing market. But what I'm really excited about is exploring the opportunity on the commercial side. Uh, council's aware, obviously, that we do the, the agreement on the residential side. And we'd like to explore, uh, doing the similar kind of thing, bidding out for five years of commercial.
And we'd like to explore uh doing the similar kind of thing, bidding out for five years of commercial. And if, if it is that a new commercial entity enters the community, it would be a party to that new agreement. And that could have a lot of benefits to the community. One of the things that communities are able to get. Are grants based on the amount of recycling that happens in the community. We're kind of a small community and so the per capita. Uh, even if it was large, we wouldn't be eligible for a lot of grants. But if we have, if we're able to get the commercial side. And those commercial entities recycle, there's an opportunity for the borough to uh be eligible for some lot, for a lot larger grants. So it's, it's really critical because the contract expires at the end of this year. And it begins for a potentially a five-year term. We get started early. If we have to change our code, we give ourselves plenty of time to do that. And if we, if we, you also want to be able to bid it out. Maybe August, so that if a new vendor is selected. You'll have time in September, October, November, December to change to the new vendor. Uh, that's very traumatic. You all lived that. And nobody wants to do that because that is a lot of trauma for the, for the customers uh to have vendor switches. But we want it to be fair and we also wanted to, you know, be able to get the best price and the best service. And getting Michelle will enable us to be able to, uh, to do that well.
Thanks, Alex.
Yeah, I, I would just point out that uh I really appreciate if uh you bring this to, to council. Um, and the idea of bringing it to council, I have participated in uh the, the waste management negotiations on, on more than one occasion. Um, and I know that our, our former vice president, uh, Ray Jurwitz had worked so hard. To create a space for us to have the recycling space. He really worked night and day to make that something that was important for this community. And so embracing that in a way that expands it and finds a maximum benefit to the community. Um, is something that I not only support, uh, but I think is in line with, with some of the best of, of, of our, our prior folks. Um, who have worked so hard. So that it does, it does. Like I'll just tell you, so I mean, so uh that having been said, um, I have no other, another comment. So is there any other uh questions or, or discussion on the matter? Uh, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes without opposition. Uh, this moves us forward now uh to number 14.
Uh, Mr. President, I motion to exonerate Danielle Weaver for the remaining 2021 real estate taxes.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, is there any discussion? Again, just as a, a point of clarification on this, uh, at the end of every kind of tax year. Delinquent taxes get kind of exonerated to the delinquent tax collector. It's not the same as your, your current, you're a tax collector. And so it's kind of a, a perfunctory process in which we move these over to uh, to the delinquent tax collector. Uh, and that's really what, what we're doing here. Uh, any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries without opposition. This moves us on to number 15.
Okay, Mr. President, I motion to appoint a new deputy tax collector. The tax collector recommends appointing Carol Donahue, tax collector of Shellfund Borough.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I would just say as a, as a point of kind of the debate from last week and in the prior month. One of the conversations that we had was trying to look at, trying to have somebody local as a, as a resident. Um, unfortunately, that wasn't something that was available. Uh, and so we, we support the, the, the tax collectors. Uh, recommendation of the current uh or the new deputy tax collector. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries without opposition. Uh, this moves us to a few other things before is we have discussion items. I just want to go through our folks who are here and see if there's anything that they need to. Uh, bring to the table with us, um, beginning uh with our borough engineer.
Uh, just a couple of quick updates as we will have some items for next month. Um, one item is the consent order, uh, which the borough entered into at the end of last year. Uh, we would plan on having an item on the agenda for next month's meeting, um, for updates to the exhibit B, which does dictate. Um, uh, what the borough has to follow in terms of its corrective actions. We are currently in the due diligence period, but we would plan on having a update to that, that we can submit to the. Uh, Allegheny County Health Department uh in March. Uh, otherwise, we'd plan on having the road program ready for bid. Um, that would open up in March with a, a, an award sometime in April. And then one last update regarding the um pump station, uh, removal and gravity sewer project. Uh, we did receive a notification that Alcoa San is received and approved all the items associated with the first reimbursement. So we do have the second reimbursement ready to go there as well. And um hopefully those should move a little bit quicker now that we've had that first reimbursement process.
Thank you. That dovetails perfectly into our Director of Public Services. Thank, any conversation you'd like to have with us today, sir?
Yeah, a couple of things, Jay. Uh, just want to let you know, fire problems have been busy again. In the last four days, we've had seven motor vehicle accidents. Uh, some were pretty severe, unfortunately. Um, the road department's been quite busy uh in January with all the snow removal. I think it went really well. Um, other than that, everything's good. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I, I would just point out that uh in terms of the world of snow removal, I continue to get the regular. You know, accolades of, of the work of you and your crews. So please pass that on that we, you know. I, I tell the stories of how, you know, people that I know and, and, you know, I, again, I go into Squirrel Hill. I took pictures of our roads. You know, and all the way across, not just the, the, not just Pittsburgh, but all the way down. And uh, you know, I am very proud of the work you guys do. You do a heck of a, a heck of a job. So, um, better than, than pretty good. Right? Outstanding work. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. I will pass that along.
Please, please do. Uh, anything else on your own else? Right before. Excellent. Uh, moving forward, uh, Mr. Solicitor? We're good?
I have nothing, Mr. President.
Oh, you've got something, just. It's not like you're not busy, but I, but I appreciate it. Uh. If I can speak to our, our. Finance officer, kind of a training person, I don't know, called you today. Uh, Krista, what do, what do we got on the table today?
Um, I think that's funny. I feel like my, my title always has like three, like slashes. For what it is, but um, no, I just wanted to thank uh council and all of the residents and everyone I've interacted with. Um, in my opportunity here at Churchill, it's been a tremendous experience. Um, and I'm really grateful for every part of it. Um, and I hope that we, our paths will cross again.
I'm sure they will very soon because you have uh Michelle right in front of you and we expect to see you. Yeah, absolutely.
This is my final meeting, so.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. You've got a number of items to talk about. Um, first of all, in the quickly and public works and the whole thing of infrastructure. Uh, we, we thought this would occur, but anecdotally, because of the Fern Hollow Bridge, there are more people driving through our community. Uh, coming off the parkway, we have a pretty high volume uh with the exit here onto William Penn Highway. And some of you knew that was going to happen, but we're seeing that um more, a little more ta- wear and tear probably through our community as a result. But just, we have to be very vigilant about infrastructure and taking care of the, the roads that we have within our community. Um, Ralph has already mentioned, um, that there've been some very serious accidents. And uh, it, it's, it's remarkable that a community to our size has so much responsibility to bear such the great weight of that. Parkway and the associated roads. It really doesn't almost make sense that in the modern metro. Area of the United States, we'd be responsible for such a heavy weight, but, but these guys do it. And we need to be very thankful and also vigilant about taking care of the volunteers and making sure we can recruit new ones into that. Uh, and speaking of the volunteers, you all as council members, we had a good meeting at Lewin Lane and on Beulah Road. Uh, we are working with PennDOT to, to look at a safety audit and we're expecting traffic counts. They put up uh. Radar detectors that not only do a speed and the average speeds, but also volumes, time of day, all the good data. And they're going to crunch that data and give us some more information. But we did look at some things that we can do uh from a, from a low cost standpoint, you know, like painting and, and working. Uh, with property owners to clear the site triangle and make sure that it's safe. It just so happens that um. Duquesne Light is doing tree trimming. And if you've noticed, they're doing a pretty aggressive tree trimming along. That's uh what would be the western side of Beulah. So that side where the power lines are at are getting cleared and, and it looks like they're taking them all the way down to the ground. Which Deb, I mean, that, that's kind of the ideal because the pine trees, pine trees make poor uh front yard street trees. They shouldn't be planted in the front. Of anyone's house. But if you can understand the way a pine tree is, it kind of blocks that site triangle that drivers need to exit a road and enter a road safely. So we're, we're happy that that seemingly is going to happen, quite frankly, without our effort, but with uh Duquesne Light working with the property owners there. Um, just circle around back to Krista and Michelle. It's hard to imagine how quickly someone who had never worked in local government could accomplish what Krista has been able to accomplish. Um, I, I was really uh thinking. That it would be three to five years to kind of get what she was able to do in about, you know, 12 to 18 months. It's phenomenal. To see how quickly she took to this information and, and whatever it was that was asked of her, she took it to high lever. Her problem solving skills, uh, her ability to work with the public and care about people's issues and concerns just is, is just remarkable. She'll do unbelievable in her next employment opportunity, uh, which who knows, maybe she'll be governor someday and I'll get to work for her. Um, but we're really excited about Michelle coming on and the two of them, uh, uh, the, the residents don't, don't get to see what I get to see, which is two. Um, unbelievable professional women willing to work together to just solve problems and, and, and make a trans- transition go smoothly. And I'm excited about that because it's rarely seen. And many of you know this, when people turn in their resignations, they kind of stop working for you. And even though they give you notice, you kind of like say, well, can you leave? Cause you're really not productive for me at this point. And I know you may have experienced that in your, your situations. That is not the case here. Krista is unbelievable and so is Michelle, the willingness to kind of say, okay, let's, let's, let's tackle this issue together. And I'm pretty excited to be a part of that. And I know you will be rewarded by giving us the privilege to move forward the way you have uh so graciously. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, city make me, make me warm and fuzzy when you say these things. Makes me happy. That's good. I'm glad, I'm glad to know that we are, we are, I feel. We'll have capable hands that have been here, which we've known. Uh, and that we have new folks coming in. I mean, it really is a extraordinary position of, of luxury that we find ourselves in that as well. So. I appreciate that. Um, Mr. Mayor? Turn on that mic, sir.
Yeah, I'm ready to talk. Comments at the time. Now, um, you might, the, the thing that I just wanted to ask today again was, you know, we talked about using the Jäger Room. And um, you know, we're coming up to March where we start our Churchill Garden Club activities back up again. And we are, I have already scheduled to do um the Forest Hills Rec Department. I would like to, with confidence, cancel that and know that I could come into the Jäger Room on March 21st. For our, our first program of the year.
Uh, so. So I, I think our prior conversation, so I don't want to speak out of turn. Cause we, one of the things we didn't want to do is just kind of dump the scheduling on, on them without talking to them. I think our prior conversation was that we would be ready to, to be reopening on, on the first. And that we would take kind of reservation around that time if I.
Yeah, we were looking to do reservations around that time. So I think looking that it is towards the end of March. Makes it reasonable for us to be able to accommodate the, the.
March 21.
Club. And again, yes. Um, but, but for those council members, we, we talked a lot about what we wanted to see before then. So.
That's right.
Uh, just be patient because I think it, we owe it to ourselves to make sure, you know, we're vetting with the council. The, the kind of language they want to see for us to be able to take those reservations and for you to be able to have that language at hand to make sure you want to. Come here.
I just, I, I don't want to wait, kind of like, do I cancel my reservation? Can I get it back again?
Yeah, and I, I understand your, your dilemma that, that you find yourself in. I, I just would say that again. I think that we, you know, we want to be able to start taking the reservations around the first of the month. We are working to have the language available to do so. Um, it may be a little bit later than that. Um, but I think we'll, we'll be there in a space that, that it should be a good space for all.
I, I think we can hold off till like March 1st and, you know, I don't have to cancel this right now, just to be on the safe side. Yeah. I appreciate that.
Not, not a worry.
Oh, and also, um, ob- obviously to welcome Michelle to our Churchill Borough family.
Absolutely. Leave that round through all staff. Is there anything, any, any council people wanted to say before we uh check our way out of here?
Just quickly.
Of course you can.
Say thank you to Krista. I, I only wish I had more of an opportunity to work with you. I've only been here for six weeks. But I just heard such great things about you from day one and I wish you the best of success. And I also welcome Michelle. And I also want to echo your sentiments to Ralph. Ralph, you're in your, you and your team. I also drive around. Squirrel Hill and everywhere else all the time. And I always have friends and family, you know, complaining about how their roads, blah, 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 blah. And um, you guys just do a terrific job and I just do appreciate everything you do. That's it for now.
Any other council members?
I just want to say thank you to the attendees uh for tonight's meeting. I really appreciate you guys tuning in and providing your comments. Um, it's very useful and helpful to craft how we move forward as a council.
Anyone else? Yep, so, so yours.
Um, I just, um, want to echo what Deb said, uh, you know, in that, um. Uh, Krista, you know, we're going to have to find ways for there to be projects that we do with Dormont. Uh, you know, but um, you're not going far. So don't be surprised if somebody pops into your office and says, hi, how about lunch? Um, uh, and also I was very privileged to be involved uh in uh. One of the interviews with Michelle and she struck me immediately as the person we were, if we were lucky. Uh, that's, that's who we'd be able to get. So Michelle, welcome. I can't wait to get to know you. And uh, you certainly have a, a pair of mentors uh that can help you move into this position. So we're looking forward to working with you.
Very much, President. Uh, as I always say, I'm all that between us and Valentine's Day this time. So I will, I will end this very quickly. Simply saying, uh, I think the, the thanks to all our staff, but in all the work, I think it's the given of our equation. We know how lucky we are. Um, but also today in particular, um, to council, uh, I, I appreciate robust debate. I think it's important. And so when we have the opportunity to do so, I think it improves us as a council. And so just wanted to take, take a minute to, to thank you all. Cause I think it's important issues that I don't just like to glide through. So. Thank you all. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All right, James and Matt, thank you all very much. Have a, have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.